Okay, I want to open the subdivision rules and regulations hearing on 11/21/2017. Okay. I'm gonna read the legal notice. The Groveland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the main meeting room of Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. To hear proposed changes to the Groveland subdivision rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Groveland. The proposed changes would be the following sections as subdivision rules and regulations. 4.3, .9, .3 cul-de-sac roadway, 4.9, .3 sidewalks, 4.11, .3 slopes. And Appendix Detail A cul-de-sac, typical cul-de-sac drawing. Signed, James M. Freer, Chairman. Advertisement dates, 10/31/17 and 11/7/17. And I have both of those advertisements in the Eagle Tribune here at Woodman. I'm gonna go over the changes to the subdivision rules and regulations. 4.3, .9, .3 pavement width shall be as follows. Major streets and cul-de-sacs, 30 feet. Minor streets, 24 feet. The, that's the present regulation. The proposed change to the regulation is as follows. 4.3, .9, .3 pavement width shall be as follows. Major streets and cul-de-sacs, 30 feet. Minor streets, 24 feet. I believe that we have a problem with the original of his 24 feet on the cul-de-sacs. The reason why we're going to 30 feet paved is simple. We have in our drawing a typical cul-de-sac that shows cobblestones. It has the roadway, some cobblestones, and then the circle. We haven't, we've been waving cobblestones for god knows how long. So what we're finding is we want to increase the pave amount from 24 feet to 30 feet. And the reason for that is the trash, if somebody parks in the cul-de-sacs, the trash trucks and fire engines can't get around them. Next one is the present regulation, 4.9, .3 sidewalks shall be constructed on both sides of the roadway. The board may waive the sidewalk requirement entirely or require that they be constructed on only one side of the roadway. When sidewalks are deleted, grass strips shall be extended in their place. The proposed change, though, be sidewalks shall be constructed on one side of the roadway in a subdivision of 10 or less homes. Sidewalks shall be constructed on both sides of the roadway in a subdivision of 11 or more homes. The board may waive the requirements entirely, but grass strips shall be extended in their place. Sidewalks shall be constructed on both sides of the roadway in all planned unit developments. Proposed additional, additional regulation, 4.11, .3, no slope below 3 to 1 is allowed. The present regulation. Appendix Detail A showing a typical cul-de-sac drawing with 24 foot of pavement, cobblestones and landscaped island. Proposed change to the regulation. Detail A showing 30-foot pavement, no cobblestone stones and an island with one tree with no branches below 6 feet. Bushes no higher than 3 feet, boulders no higher than 3 feet, and grass only around edge for 3 feet. Remaining front footage to the center should be mulched. I think the proposed additional regulation, okay. Yes, in 4.11, .3, there, we just, we're adding no slope below 3, 3 to 1. It's just a clarification. They didn't say that at that point in time. All right. Are there any questions on the legal notice and what our proposals are to the subdivision Anything from the board?
No.
Anything from the audience? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna call for a vote to accept the changes to the, as proposed to the subdivision rules and regulations.
I make a motion, accept a new rigging on them.
A second.
Just what you read.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
What was the motion?
Okay. Subdivision rules and regulations changes.
Which one was that?
The words, yes. We started with this.
Um, 3 to 1. So we're still wiping out the sidewalks?
Yep.
Completely?
Well, not completely, no.
No, one side.
One side, okay. There'll be two-sided in planned unit developments, which are much larger, or 11 or more houses.
What about a 6 house?
No, 1 through 10 could do one.
One side.
One side.
Okay.
Okay.
And a small, small circle.
It's a what?
A smaller circle also.
Yeah, the smaller circle we always kind of gave, until, from the 120?
Yes.
Yeah. Cause it's, the only trick on that and the small circle is the, some of the trucks can't get around the radius.
Right, exactly. And, I mean, and just put one tree, like you said, put one tree in there instead of four, five.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, as long as they landscape it and stuff, it looks, it looks pretty nice. So, okay. Let's rack and roll. George, do you have minutes?
No. I'll get that first.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna, I'm gonna, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Sub motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Change these.
Close the hearing.
Oh, yeah. Did I miss something?
745 Q. And a second. Okay. Next up, we're gonna open the planning board meeting of 11/21. Okay.
Sub motion.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First up, we want to approve the minutes of 10/3, 10/12, and 11/2. A motion and a second.
Sub motion.
Okay, second please.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two, I have some bills to pay. I have to pay for the hearing, so, first one is North of Boston, which is also known as Eagle Tribune, since they own everything else north of Boston. Okay, $101 for the little heads that speak. Okay, I need a motion and a second.
Sub motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second, I have a bill from, it's actually one of the engineers, okay, coming out of the engineering money, the Civil Design Group, for $3,100.
Sub motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next one is W.C. Cammett. Okay, for $3,000 for Homestead Lane.
Sub motion.
Okay. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next one is W.C. Cammett again, this time for Sunset Circle. I need, that's, let's see, 3125.
Sub motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, yeah, votes unanimous. All right. All right. We got a lot release. This is...
Apple Blossom.
Apple Blossom, yeah.
Do you have the release?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold the first two. I think the first two are originals.
The first two are?
First two. Cause that's the ones you're gonna sign. Everybody look at them.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are happy with it.
I'll take one, Jim. Jim?
These are the originals.
Motion to endorse.
Let me write some down first.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, the motion to endorse. By Sarnson. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The motion to endorse. By Sarnson. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, let me, let me start this.
Okay.
I'm gonna do two copies, I, with the original signatures, because what I'm finding sometimes...
You get lots?
Yeah, that happens. And, I won't go into it. I'll take him to the clerk tomorrow, get him signed, and then Joe, I'll, I'll call you. I'll give you one back.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually, oh, is this yours, Joe?
That's mine.
Yeah, you can actually just get them to him. Cause he has to, he can stamp and record them.
Well, she's got, I gotta sign it again, and I gotta appear before her. That's the problem.
Oh, the notary?
Yeah.
Gotta be notary.
So, can't, can't just do it any other way.
Doesn't she have all of our signatures on file? For that? Yeah. Thought that's what that was, everybody was on file. Going that way.
Okay. All right, we got an A and R, what was it? What was the address? Was it 22 Center?
Uh, 23 Wood Street.
23 Wood?
Wood Street? What is it?
Uh, I was sorry.
All right. Let's, can't assign an A and, what's it, what parcel is it? What's it?
There's a property down there that had a fire recently, recently April, I think, 21th Street.
Is this a new, is that one of the three new ones from, not Petraska's, who's the other fellow?
This house is a lot cabin. This is the lot as it, as it was, or gonna be purchasing it. What we're excited to do is...
I always hate this. Somebody doesn't get to see it.
Who's, who's land is this?
Uh, Latham.
Latham?
Family has a tree farm here.
Yeah, so the Latham's, get that.
And their tree farm kind of goes up.
And then, who's the other fellow with the farm down there?
Uh, it was, uh, used to be the Sue Batches.
Yeah, Sue Batches. So these, these are brand-new lots.
Uh, this is Wood Street.
Right, right, but the lots that, on this page, makes the Sue Batches.
Uh, no, Sue Batches are on Center Street.
Right, but these, oh, so this is the Wood Street side. Okay, my mistake.
This is Wood Street, yes.
Yeah, all right. The other side of the property.
There's an existing dwelling here.
Yeah.
It's been there for, I don't know. This house was built, I think, in the 50s. It's a lot cabin.
Is this up near Deb?
Deb Stone.
Okay.
Where's the, the easement?
We'll figure it out.
Where's the easement for Latham's?
Right here.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay, that used to be, yeah, right, exactly, still there.
Still the farm?
Yep.
Okay. So that's good. So what's your, okay, house burnt down, and you're doing what?
Uh, sorry, it has some fire damage to it.
Yeah.
So we wanted to combine parcel 4C with this, and we opted to make these two sheets, so it was a little clearer. And then once this section was added, we're gonna take the entirety of that parcel and divide it into the two conforming lots, with the lot cabin remaining on one, and a new Groveland to be built on the other.
So you're doing a lot line adjustment?
I had brought it in A and R on Center Street, and it involved four different parcels. And it was a very unclear picture, so we sort of decided to approach it this way to make it more clear. Taking this 17,000 square foot section, dividing it with the existing lot at 21th Street, and then dividing the newer, larger parcel into 21th Street and 23rd Wood Street.
So you have two acres there?
Not, not four.
Is it Wood Street? Eight, sorry. What's the zone of it?
60,000.
This is our D.
30.
So we're adding, taking the lot land, this is a lot mine origin plan. Have that lot mine, but on the other one. Buying the parcel 4C with Y5, making Y5 larger, have more farms.
Who owns lot 4C?
Uh, this is the remaining land Webster's used to own.
So the Webster's own this little piece?
They, they did, then I bought it from the Webster's.
Oh, so you own this now? So who owns this house?
Um, I own that, and he owns...
Oh, you bought it?
Yes.
Both?
Buying off the town.
So...
That was very fragile lot.
I think we've got that.
Got that.
I told them that the Hoolas were after them.
So you're in here tonight for a lot line adjustment?
Well, that's part of it. Yeah, I mean, option A was, put this all over plan. Would you be a little bit confusing?
Still confusing.
We'd like to combine this parcel with the existing block five.
Yeah.
And then divide the larger parcel into, you see the street footage, your circle, 30 foot wide, block, and then another slightly larger lot.
Why is this looking? So, why is this cut here?
It's a point of perfection.
I see, I see 150, and then you narrow it down.
Take it to 150. It has the width, the length, the length, that.
This on the hill, so, saying it's only 130, 25.
On a whole new lot, that's all. New lot was quite a lot.
Is this the new lot?
This, this, this one here is way down here, the house is way down here.
Yeah.
This one here is right up on the road. This one is gonna be up on the road again because...
Was it Petraska up here too?
Uh, Petraska's are on this side.
This side, okay. So, this is a new house?
Moving house, yeah, close.
So why you get so close over there?
Cause of the, of the...
They don't like us to build the...
So you gotta pull it over to and to?
Probably.
All right, so your, so your first step is you gotta, you gotta do the lot line adjustment and then go record it. So, that's an easy one.
Can't this be signed as a two-sheet plan? It is actually two-sheet. Set up as a, as a two-sheet plan.
No, cause one isn't recorded yet. You haven't merged the maps, so...
Okay.
How are you gonna do that?
Some pages.
Two different recordings, one, you don't have it yet.
It gets recorded at 3, 305, and then one's recorded at 310.
Okay, so, so, we record the A and R plan for the lot line adjustment, and then you bring it back now that, once, with the recorded plans of that, and put it in here. I got a question on that. I don't know why that has to be like that. I get the, I get why you're trying to do the frontage like that, but it looks like you're jamming them in a little too tight.
I respectfully suggest that you change your zoning to...
Right, we can increase it out there to, I'm sorry, that's not RA, we'll probably do that. It's a good idea.
The wetlands is the impediment here.
That's not our, wetlands isn't our bag, that's conservation. What do they got you doing? Do you have an order of conditions?
It's completely conforming.
Okay.
In front of all the regulations that you have in place today, on zoning and other regulations.
So, so the, the lot line adjustment you need first, so that's a no-brainer. So, a motion to endorse the lot line adjustment, and a hold on this.
Why would you need to hold that?
Cause I am. I'm withholding signature to review on that. Did, did we know this was coming in?
Yeah.
For this? Okay. Did you wanna send this out for review, for the, take a look?
A reviewer?
Yeah, we did A and Rs too.
If he's creating two conforming lots...
Well, the only question I have is this here, and I would like more time to study that and walk it, to see what's going on out there. To me, I don't know why this, I mean, if you have an order of conditions, can you get a waiver to kick this back over and get rid of this dog leg? Why not?
No. He needs a 150-foot buffer, meaning a 150-foot.
And the red line is?
Buffer.
So the CBA's within the buffer?
Yeah. You'll have 75 feet.
Of the contiguous buildable area, so you're gonna build, you can build right there?
Yep. You have, on that one, you have, who has 26,799, 50, CBA outside of the 75 footer, which is 89% of the lot.
So, the CBA has to be 100% CBA, so...
100% is dead, it is 100%. 26,799.
See the circle? See the circle?
You can build in the buffer, it's in the pictures.
You can build in.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
You can physically build in the buffer.
Okay.
Yes.
After 75 feet. So there's a 75-foot setback off the wetlands, and we can't build it.
That's an, okay, so we're going up to this line here for the 75 feet.
It's 75 feet in.
You gotta...
Much more than that, it's allowed.
So nobody can do anything back there?
Yes, you can't build it. You can't build it.
No.
Not without seeing an additional order of conditions.
Right. Any crissbies, or are they raised?
Nope. This is such a, he just sort of designed a infiltrated system for that one. Just one, he hasn't designed yet, it's a repair system, and it needs to be done. This is actually a system that he's in right now, but he hasn't even inspired it yet. Start a system of use, or additional soil testing, just to make sure if it needed to replace, we're good. And that lot could be the same, lot could be a infiltrated system, or just fill in bed.
You're just gonna repair the existing home?
I'm sorry?
You're just gonna repair the existing home?
I hope you do.
What caused the fire?
What's the difference of causing the fire, or are you just... I mean, no, I've been just saying...
I don't know, I didn't hear about it in the news. It's just, why the cause of fire in the lot down? It's just kinda gee whiz data, you know? Only cause I have a concern with fires.
Some of the questions you ask while he's crazy, so...
Let's see, I'm in the industrial construction field.
Yes, I know, me too.
Electrical, electrical, electrical fires happen all the time, so it's always gee whiz to know what burnt the house down.
I don't ask how much people make, or anything like that either, so...
Bob, point of order. I'm just asking a simple question.
I know, I understand.
Does anybody know what burnt the house down?
No, a fire.
Thank you.
The person says, "Clearing the oven at 5:00 in the morning."
Probably tomorrow, huh?
Gee, thanks, pal.
We could, then it's all one plan.
Well, you're doing two steps. That's, that's my only concern, is that you're doing two steps. So you're, so you're doing, you want signatures on both.
Yeah.
And so, that's, it's, we, we, I'm gonna just say that we've never done it that way. We've certainly done lots of lot line adjustments, no big deal, you get the parcel, and then you come in, now they're both parcels, and then you're, you're asking, you're, it's good that you own both, but now, but you still don't have this recorded and this plan recorded on...
You have, you have done that before, because before, we were just on this, the line here, and called this parcel 4C1, parcel 4C2, parcel 5A, and parcel 5B, which would have been a little more complicated to try and explain. This way, it's very simple, adding this, and then we're dividing.
No, no, I get the mechanics, gentlemen, but you're...
It's essentially, because I own all the property on that paper. And creating these two lots are the property that I own.
So then why don't you just do one plan?
That plan would suffice, but this adds clarity to what we're doing.
Now, if you own both parcels, I, I see what you're doing, the two steps. So, this is excellent for explaining to the board, this is what you need to record, cause then you're gonna be record, that's what my point is.
If you endorse that, I can record it.
That's what I would recommend, eliminating a plan, cause otherwise you're gonna go back and forth.
I would ask you to endorse both, so that it's, it's clear down the road to something.
But you own both parcels, so you're combining...
But they're two separate parcels, so they need to be combined, and then they can split. But they can be done at the same time. We actually have, set up as a pile of, page one, page two, so it can be recorded at the same time. Page one will be this one, and page two will be that one.
So, whose name is this, is 4C in? Is that in your name now?
This is currently owned by Oak Valley Development, now let's see.
This piece?
This piece, this piece, and this piece.
That's, that's you, okay. Okay, so you own them both, all, all three of them, right? That's, that's you, okay, okay, so you own them both, all, all three of them, right now in your name?
Yes.
So go to the single plan, if you own them both, put it in here, stick a note on the plan, done. If he wants to put the note for the clarity for four C. If you own everything. Right, so then, you know, you can add it in there, there was combined, but you don't need it.
I think this thing presented to you is a two sheet plan.
Much like the subdivision control lot.
Two, two lot.
But it's A and R.
Two lot.
It's a, A and R stands for approval.
Required under subdivision control lot, I got that.
Because one of these lots doesn't show adequate frontage.
I didn't deny it, I didn't say anything about denying it, I'm asking you, why, why didn't you record one?
I tried to be here a few weeks ago.
This didn't go along, we, we didn't get him on the last agenda.
First I've seen it.
Because we couldn't get him on the last agenda, because I was in Fort Myers at the time.
That's, so what, that's, that's neither here nor there, you're here, so. Okay, so what's, this is point, you wanna record this plan?
I'd like to.
He wants to record two lots, he wants to record two lots.
Record both of them.
And a lot line revision plan.
If you guys wanna charge me for a lot line revision in creating a new lot, great.
Well, it is, it's gonna be, a new lot's fine, so.
But I don't see anything here that's, that's so egregious that would require me to come back next year.
I didn't say come back next year.
Yeah, it's clear to me what they're gonna do and why they wanna do it.
I get that.
Yeah.
So, my suggestion is we let them do that.
So, my problem is, is that if we're going with a two sheet plan, and you're gonna go with a two step process, and you're gonna combine first and then do it, okay, and you're gonna record one to the other. From a legal perspective, are we able to endorse a plan where this isn't recorded yet, so, but we can, since he's the landowner of all the parcels, jump immediately to this, and you can put a letter of explanation how you wish for clarity, I don't know why you need one, if you're combining all this land together to create two lots. So I'm gonna fly a motion to endorse this one plan on Wood Street with two A and R lots, the fee will be just the single, the single A and R.
And the registry's gonna accept that?
Yes, they will, cause he's the landowner of both. There's no difference.
But then it's gonna cost him to go back and re-subdivide it.
He's not gonna, wait, 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 he's not, no, he's already doing it here, this is already here, it's one plan, one shot, one fee.
I understand that, but it, I mean, it's, it's all, you're, he's recording as, as one, one lot, he wants two lots out of it eventually.
He's got it right here, it's the two lot plan, okay, so we're all set, just go with the two lot plan, he's got everything on it, if he wasn't the landowner, if he was buying it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, so we're all set with one sheet?
Okay.
He's got it all.
My carcase would be that you endorse both of ours, I know when the plan gets recorded, there's gonna be some questions from the assessors office.
No, there won't be, you own it all.
But it's a separate loss right now, they need to be able to follow how it became that size to feel it's right in the sheet.
No.
This is how we have this plan, then we did that.
So then, if you wish, stick your note on your, on your plan, you got a pen?
This is my desired clarity.
No, right here, his plan.
Okay.
It's the best note he could write.
Okay, there's some, gentlemen, gentlemen, if you don't wanna go straight to it, to, to plan, there's a reason, and it's not clarity, in my mind, there's some, what's going on with this that you guys need another step? I'm trying to help you out here.
Adding this to that, this is a separate lot.
But you're doing it already here.
It took me three meetings to get a lot like this on Satter Street approved, because you guys couldn't comprehend the different parcels that were being shifted all over, this is far clearer.
First I've seen it.
This is different, it's time on a different point, what we did a year ago.
Didn't put it on Satter Street, and it was.
Very similar.
Very cloudy, it was difficult to read.
This is pretty basic to me.
I know.
I don't like the dogleg, but it's legal.
Oh, it'll take all night, just a good few minutes.
I got a motion, endorse the two, two step plan, I need a, you need a second and a vote, and then we sign, okay? And you get your two lots.
To endorse the two step plan?
I have a motion on the floor.
To endorse the two lot plan?
This plan, give him his two lots, meets it, go, five hundred dollars, cause then you don't have to pay the second fee either, so you actually save money.
I don't understand this plan.
Anybody wanna second the motion? Call for a vote.
Would anybody be interested in making your motion to endorse both plans?
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor, he's gonna call for the vote, okay, it's pretty simple. You, you get the same thing, you, you. I don't know what the difference is.
I, I, I would say it's not the same plan, I think it has to go.
Alright, I haven't heard, I haven't heard a second, so.
I'll, I'll second it.
You wanna second that, to sign the plan with just, with the two lots?
Two lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody else said?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, my only concern is that the lot four C isn't shown.
If there's a problem, come back, we'll do what we have to do then.
Get your my lot, they just voted again, sign it. Okay, five hundred dollars, ton of gold. We'll sign one of these.
Bring a pen, will you?
We got one. If it works, let's see, got it. This is a J D twenty first. You have three copies of the form A?
There is a.
Okay. You have number five, Dutch comments, five in. Lot five?
I'm sorry?
Lot five. The description?
There you go.
Grab it.
Just questioning, this, this is map eight lot five?
Yeah, just making sure you get the right.
And then that eight lot four is.
Should we add a four to that?
You could add a four to it.
What's?
This is lot five, and this is lot four.
So on the, on the form A, you've, you've got, yeah, so four and five, is that what you did?
Yes, that's what it said.
Four and five.
Okay, to pull up?
The other one says four, I mean, you'd rather just sign this one?
For the clerk purposes, we will get this simple plan, onto that. Okay, one, two, three, okay, Mr. Chair, we gotta check the five hundred dollars, we have three form As.
In the bag.
Two, three, six certified copies back, as you know, from the registry. Jim gets to endorse those. And we have one paper copy, right? Of the two. And then with the clerk, tomorrow, she stamps all three, you get one, we get one, register this one.
Somebody said, I don't think they're registering, but wants one.
I don't know, I think you gotta present it, but, have it stamped? That way they can't say anything else.
He must be buying pens at the dollar sign.
Can't get out of that aisle.
You guys wanna endorse the paper copy for our file?
Dog walks around with them in his mouth every now and then.
You like saying, or you, oh, just you saying?
Yeah, it's just me for tomorrow.
Is the foundation any good on the lot? Lot Hammond?
Yeah, I was looking at the house report first.
They need one of these copies?
He gets all three?
Gets all three.
He's gonna stamp all three, one's gonna go in our box.
Okay.
And then we made it up with this plan.
Okay.
And then he goes and records, comes back with six certified copies, oh, in the disc, don't forget the disc, three discs.
Yes, Jim.
Yeah.
Do you have the discs already? Yeah, so three. No. Thank you. Yep.
A real brief announcement, Mary Ann Consoli and her mother moved into Sunset Way. Sunset, circle, I mean, so. And I got that call a couple of days ago, and thought I'd just pass that and went to the board, so, alright. Um, see if we can get another one of these things done, hurry. This is Fairways Drive, we're accepted, the acceptance in Fairway Drive, last time we couldn't do it, we went down two members, and.
The street acceptance, or the?
Street acceptance, yes, road acceptance.
Oh, it's road acceptance, so we're still holding the fund?
Yeah, we still hold funds.
Okay.
Okay, but, you know.
Bobby, have you seen this? With road commissioner?
No.
Not really.
So.
Well, he, he can't vote on this.
No, but he can give input as road commissioner, right, or no?
No.
So who's giving your input?
I'll give it, I mean, I've been over that road so many times.
No, 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 we need from the construction.
It's fine, nothing wrong.
That's not what I meant.
No, I went out there, it, it actually.
So, so can you delegate?
Yeah.
Authority to have?
Yeah.
Her vote as road commissioner?
Sure.
No, I mean, can you legally, I mean, someone's gotta vote.
Yeah, I can, I can appoint an assistant.
I've been there a hundred times and saw it go through, so.
Someone, well, someone's gonna be the acting.
There's something, though, isn't there something with conservation, though, Jim?
No, they, they cleaned it up, I got, let me read this into the record, okay, called Mike today, and he said, sent me an email, we have an agreement in place with Azel Time, and that he paid the funds he owed. He is working with three owners to put the markers in that we agreed to at our meeting, he is having problems with one, but he should be able to get it done. I think at this point you can release the funds, but we, we're not releasing the funds, we're basically just accepting the road.
Wait a minute, is the, so, just a question, so the right of way, and to accept the road includes the bounds, doesn't it?
Yeah, the bounds were put in a long time.
No, these are different bounds, he's a conservation.
Oh, different, those are the conservation bounds, got it, okay, so from the towns, from, since you can't vote on this, Bob?
No.
So, when we ask for the motion, for the input from the town, which we normally do for the standard protocol for accepting a road by the planning board, and then we're gonna do it again at town meeting, who are you going to appoint her right now as AD, you know? Assistant road commissioner, I mean, somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta say yes, that's.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
On that, alright, so, motion to accept them, and then, since we have an assistant now, accepting for the town.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, there you go, huh, accepting a fee and a road and everything.
Yeah, I'm all.
Alright, um.
Okay.
Is this, does somebody have the signed copy, endorse?
I have this right here, yes.
Is it endorsed, I don't know, on this page?
Yeah, right here. I have to sign it.
No, George's signature. He's a blank, along with a date.
They never get, never did that.
Okay, so we approve it upon receiving the proper documents.
Inside, signing it. Okay, sign out of meeting?
Yes. Second on the motion to sign out of meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, I got another thing to do.
Quick question. Would I read this, I think this is your determination that those lots do not require approval?
That's on the form A.
Typically, the chairman and the members sign the sheet as well?
Not on the form A, see the, see the endorsement on the left hand side on the bottom, where it says the plan was approved? Right where you found it.
No, I see this says received.
Yeah, approved on the bottom, look at the bottom, third line, endorsed.
Endorsed.
Endorsed, means approved.
Would you care to read this?
Twenty one, this is, this is A one is a different one.
You guys have already, always had those in the past.
Nope. Not form A one.
I thought that's what I asked for.
Now, with the subdivisions, with the subdivisions you did, but the regular, the regular A and Rs is that form you got right there with the endorsement on it.
Seem odd that a form titled determination that subdivision approval is not required?
This is one of the many forms that's in the back of the subdivision control lot book as, as a different form. That is the form that goes to the registry.
Page that immediately follows this, this is my proof that I submitted the plan to you guys, that's the proof that the registry and everybody else wants.
That form A that you get right there?
Yep.
Is the form that we've been endorsing since I've been here twenty five years, that gets, that also accompanies the plan to the registry, the clerk signs it, we sign it, they stamp it, you go.
Okay, so this is just a superfluous form that's in your subdivision regulations?
There's a lot of them in, in there as well, it's an optional form, there's some requirements of this, this isn't one of them.
Is there any harm in signing this?
I'm gonna record this one, I'm gonna record that.
I don't think, I never remember signing this.
No, we never did, it's one of those, it's actually an old, old, old form that goes way back.
Way, way back. Alright. Thank you.
Alright.
You're welcome.
Goodnight.
Okay, what else we got? Substance, Nichols, stay here? No, Nichols isn't coming? Okay.
Ayes. I haven't heard from them, they, they were supposed to be here, I mean, what we have, and I'll pass it out, and everybody take one and start looking at it, it's a peer review, okay, that's been done, so.
Oh, Nick, this is.
Okay.
And what's Atwood?
I have not heard from Atwood at this point, Phil, have you heard from him?
I just received a thank you email, that's it.
Alright, I'm gonna, hmm? No, no.
Atwood used to come into us, both of them.
Yeah, but here's the problem, they've signed, they filed a definitive plan.
Who did? Atwood?
Yes.
But they could still go in to the water.
Right.
But they have to, we haven't, we haven't even reviewed it.
No, what I'm trying to say is, you know, they, they should have sent us a letter canceling coming into the meeting, not ready yet. Alright, and they probably should have given us an extension of. Follow me?
Yeah.
So, I, I agree for canceling, when did they file the definitive? While that?
I gotta go back, yeah.
Alright, so we just, motion to send them notification that they need to request an extension. To the board, ninety days.
I'm gonna reach out to them probably tomorrow, to get them into our December meeting. I'm going to reach out to them probably tomorrow to get them into our December meeting.
Yeah, we'll just ask them for the extension, that way it covers everybody.
Okay, you made a motion.
Yep.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll send them an email tomorrow.
I have a question. How come they didn't file preliminary plan?
They, they jumped, they, they did a stormwater land disturbance plan and a lot of that would have been covering kind of like a preliminary. Okay, so, and a lot of really good engineers will jump right to a definitive plan. And that's what they did.
They, they can do it, it doubles the fees, though.
Yeah.
But we, we want a preliminary plan because you get all the bugs worked out. And actually, the definitive, when they go straight to definitive, extends it. Every definitive jump that we've seen other than like a single lot or something like that is typically takes longer because the bugs don't get worked out in the preliminary process, residents don't get notified, all the boards don't have time to put in for it on that. So, so actually the definitive ends up pushing way out.
Okay.
On that, I think Phil here can attest to that, he's done more than his fair share of revisions on definitives.
All right. Yeah, some of these. What I'm gonna do is, did you get, did you get one of these? Did you get one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everyone, they don't need it.
Yeah, already some.
No, if you want to blab, I mean, that's it, you know?
All right.
So.
Don't have to tell him twice.
No. He knows when it's a good exit.
So Nichols, Nichols isn't coming in then?
No.
No, okay.
Or Atwood.
Okay, so we're up on, on Billis?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, at this point, we had discussed at our last meeting about the thought of bringing it back, bringing, reopening the hearing.
Yeah, I was just going to apply that motion.
And I think that's what I'd rather do first, okay, and then I'll read the letter.
Yeah, motion to reopen the public hearing on Billis Way. Do we have a date we can assign to it?
Yeah, it's going to be the 19th.
Of December?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm only going to hold one meeting.
Well, hopefully that one meeting will do it, but we'll know then. But are they going to be able to get the advertising out?
I thought you told me to do it. You wanted me to do that at one point.
They, is it out?
No.
Okay, the applicant actually does it. We don't have to do it, they do.
They're not going to do it.
Well, they have to.
Why they have to?
Because they're the applicant. The applicant does the hearings. I mean, we can do it.
We're forcing it.
Okay, so then we can do it and do it, but that's fine with us, so.
Okay, you, you said the, you motioned.
I did.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
So the 19th is it?
Yeah, I'm going to read the letter, okay? So, I'm not going to take any comments from anybody, I can't, okay? But I will read the letter and I think you'll understand, all right. For no reason other than I am unable to attend in representation of my client. This is from Adam Costa, they're one of the lawyers. I am hereby seeking a continuance of tonight's discussion of the Billis Way subdivision. I do not know what your December meeting dates are. But plead add us, plead add us, add us to the soonest agenda possible and we'll coordinate accordingly. Please recall that we've been prepared to proceed back on November 2nd, but the board lacked the form. Tonight is difficult, it is Thanksgiving week. Lisa's meet is traveling to visit family and I have another commitment tonight that was scheduled approximately six weeks ago. Additionally and respectfully, I also want to remind the board though you, that, through you, that it already voted to approve Billis Way definitive subdivision plan. It did so back on September 5th, 11 weeks ago. I've heard murmurings that representatives of the cemetery commission and the water and sewer department were to attend tonight and that they have certain comments or requests. But the public hearing was long ago closed. Any such comments or requests are untimely and cannot be entertained. No substantive discussion should be occurring. The only purpose of a further meeting post-September 5 was for the board to review, approve and vote the decision. For what it is worth, you'll also recall that we had extensive interactions as far back as our preliminary plan submittal and multiple meetings with the cemetery commission. We addressed the commission's concerns through plan revisions. It issued a memorandum supporting the project, subject to certain conditions that were referenced explicitly when the board voted to approve the definitive plan. Likewise, Bill Holt had personally met with Tom Cusick, the water and sewer superintendent, and did so prior to sending the last set of plans to Peter Williams, which were modified to address water sewers' feedback. Again, I ask for a continuance of the board's next meeting in December. Prompt action by the board at such meeting will be appreciated. I do reserve all rights on the general laws, chapter 41, sections 81U, as I must. That's Adam Costas. We also received copies of the memorandum of decision, it's a draft copy from Peter Williams, finally. There's stuff missing in this thing, I can tell you that right now.
Did you get a copy of the plan with a cover sheet for your input during the filing process for this, for your board?
With a cover sheet?
Yeah, that said, please have your all inputs according to subdivision regulations, section 345, et cetera.
Initially?
Yeah.
I sent, I sent all the boards, the cover letter, the entire set of plan, not just the cover sheet, the entire set of ones.
Did you get all that? Did you have?
Yes.
Back, back, James?
I had two, two comments, two times we commented on it.
Yeah, and it came here?
Looked at Jim.
Okay.
And then we, we had a site, he's right, we met on site.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we had a board meeting, reviewed the plan. Plan was reviewed, it was okay. At the meeting.
Right, so now what happened?
What's that?
So it's all set from the tier four?
Yeah, the plan itself is, is, is all set. There was other questions on lots A and B, I guess, on how it was.
Yeah, we're going to label those, they're labeled right now as, not the little parcels, obviously, because they're not. Parcel A is being used to the cemetery, beside cemetery, is that right? Beside cemetery. And parcel B is the town water, one said we're going to need it to the water park. And we can put those notes on the plan and those on.
Whether it goes to the water department, goes to the town of Groveland, it doesn't matter. The real problem with that lot is that, that flows directly to the Meramec.
Absolutely.
And literally right now, we, we had, that is a right because that's been flowing to the Meramec for years, okay? So is Johnson Creek. But there are other areas in town that we had to flow it to the Meramec, and that is stormwater, okay? But under stormwater rules and regs and everything, and the Meramec being what it is at this point with many, many problems, we got to make sure that we don't have anything going in there other than basically stormwater, filtered stormwater at this point, so the, that is something that we do need and the plan's never reflected that.
Right, just called parcel A.
And parcel A, parcel B not a building lot. And there is nothing on the plan that says they will be deeded to the town, okay? I mean, literally speaking, also that catch basin, okay? That, that area should be deeded to the town as well. And the reason being is, so we can clean it out.
Well, yeah, it's, it's actually an easement on parcel, which is going to town.
Okay, but, you know, we're, we're going to have to have another plan, that's why we want to reopen the hearing. Okay, we don't get that done, okay? I mean, that, that's going to be hell to work with, with new people coming into that and then them starting up, you know, an owners consortium and everything, and then all of a sudden, they decide to put a big rock in front of the road into the cemetery and, and stuff like, and if you think it hasn't happened, it has happened.
I, I don't have a.
We've had that happen in the subdivision.
Applicant has any issue with making that stipulation that goes to be on the plan that way?
That's why we're reopening the hearing.
I'll definitely talk to him ahead of time.
Okay. And, and tell him, he needs to start, he needs to work with me, okay? And he knows it.
Are you talking about Jim?
Okay? Because I can be the nicest guy in the world, I can be a real bastard, Phil. And I'm not afraid to be that. So if they're going to, they're going to walk in here and they want to get a tea to tea.
We want to work with them.
They're going to lose, I'll tell you that right now.
Circumvent anything we find out.
Not only are they going to lose, they're going to lose clients because nobody's going to want to go near them. I want to get that across to you, okay? Because you have been making statements, the town was going to get it.
Yes.
But you never changed the plan.
That was what I was always told, that that would be, I always represented that and I believe in representing the truth, so. I don't mean to deceive anybody.
It was definitely a discussion with my, my board and I brought it up with the board.
But that's the whole problem.
So the water sewer board have a decision?
We're being told through this.
I thought the agreement with the cemetery says it'll be.
Yeah, yeah, you have a written agreement.
Right.
But where the hell is he coming from?
I don't know.
Tell me to shut up. I'm not going to shut up. That's the worst thing to say to me. I just read it. So you can deliver the message to Jose, okay? Oh, I'm very upset with him. If he wants a sick meat on me, tell him to do it. Because this town blew $30,000 on a zoning bylaw rewrite that never went anywhere by her.
Your board in water sewer?
Approved the plan.
Approved the plan, do you have a decision from your board that states we approve the plan with, we get this land, we have this, we want this pipe, we do this, we do that?
No.
No, do you normally do that?
No, normally it's a vote at the meeting with the revisions that you put on the plan.
Right.
And, and that's it.
Okay.
So they, they take a vote on the plan as it's submitted.
Right.
It's voted on, it's approved.
Right.
As far as what was going on with how the, the land was going to get deeded over to the town, that's a town decision, not necessarily a water department.
But it's a requirement for you, for your board, isn't it?
No, we, we accept all the pipes in the road once, once the road is accepted.
Right. Okay, so the deeded parcel.
He's talking about something totally different.
Oh, you're different, is that?
What, what we would have to do is, I, I don't have any problem going to the board of selectmen because what this is, parcel B goes directly out into the river. And it's best that the town can fold that, not, not the owners association, okay? That could cause a problem.
So this is an ownership, it's not an easement, it's, it's an ownership.
I don't want an ownership, I don't want an easement.
So, so this is a continued ownership that the town has had before, so, so this is going to be a separate deed, so that, that is a.
Exactly.
So that should come from the board of selectmen and their decision under the same section where that cover sheet went that you put out in reference to the subdivision regs that states, for instance, your board example, we want 12-inch pipes, we want so many hydrants, we want this, we want that. And although it's on the plan, if you detailed what you were looking for, we need to have that back because the subdivision memorandum of decision references your decision. Some of this stuff sometimes doesn't get on the plan, we've seen this stuff recently that sunsets are classic, okay? There's supposed to be a fence and a wall, and it mentions it in one section, but not on the plan. It just kind, it's way too vague. And they're, and they're also supposed to cross-reference, so when the memorandum gets filed as a book and page, it goes on to the plan because they go hand in hand. And on the plan, it says book and page memorandum of decision. So this is the script of what's on that plan. And if you've got a decision or put certain requirements on it, that's going to go in here because it references it and all gets put together. So your decision from water sewer, cemetery and all the other boards, in this case, board selectmen for the, for the land, that all goes into the memorandum, so no one, if you just have this and not a plan, you know what's going on.
So who puts together memorandum?
We do. That's why we sent in.
Our peer review engineer.
Well, that's, that's the confusion there is the peer review and how much they're taking the input and putting that together. Typically, that's what I've had in the past.
Right.
Was a conversation and a relationship with a peer review consultant. They wrapped that all up in a nice new package for you guys.
Right.
I didn't get that.
Okay, we didn't either. So, another reason why we're opening the hearing, there were so many changes post the initial phase that we're reopening the hearing to get all these changes in, change the plans, get your decision, anyone else's decision, cemetery's decision, you're going to have requirements. Fence, this, that, land access, whatever your decision is, we accept it as is, and then it becomes part of the memorandum.
I don't think it has to go with decision that they worked out with.
It's kind of whatever they want, it's.
Not really, it's what the client agreed to with them.
No, if, if.
But we, we never even got anything, we never got a new plan, we did not get any memorandums or anything. We got nothing.
So, so the way this is supposed to work by the subdivision control law is, under that letter section.
Some things on that list, they're in the butter, that's all we have.
Wait, okay, it says, also says any and all other boards, if they're in the butter and they're certainly part of the town, then they should be getting a plan. But either way, if they have, if conservation, water and sewer, any of the other boards that come through, they reach their own decision and they put that feedback back to us, which is why you send them that plan with the cover letter, and they say, we want 12-inch water tanks, we need seven hydrants, we need this, we need that.
Do you actually list the boards that you wanted in the sentence?
It's in the, it's in the regulation, yeah. But you have a butter too. His decision isn't in there. One of the 16, the selectmen, we haven't got theirs either. So we're going to get those and, and whatever.
I understand the decisions of, of, of the commission, the water sewer commission, the cemetery commission, I understand that agreement as well, but that was worked out with the client and his attorneys had a hearing of the commission, they got an agreement that they.
Correct, it was done on June 12.
Right.
However, we never saw a plan showing our agreement on a plan.
So your agreement.
It's not there.
Your agreement becomes part of this memorandum and it goes in. And your agreement.
Yep.
And anyone else in any other item in board goes in there. And it's referenced in here in the language that any other board's decision has to be honored. And if not, the whole memorandum is null and void, and it says that in the language. Okay, sometimes we don't get the feedback on what we're looking for to staple it in, so it becomes kind of murky. And that happened on Sunset, okay? We had way too many issues with that going on, so.
The, the real problem on this whole thing with the memorandum, I, I can tell you, is Peter, Peter Williams, our peer review engineer is making up his own. And, you know, he's not talking to us enough. And he's not showing up at the meetings at what they did have, that's another problem.
Well, that's our problem, that's, that's the board's problem.
It's, it's been told to Peter, get with it, goodbye. That's how far I've gone with this thing, and Denise gave me that authority because of what is happening. I hate to air that dirty laundry, but, you know, quite frankly, you know, if he wants to lose it, he can lose it. You know, what we need is, is, is basically the engineers to do their job, but to make sure they get something back if somebody isn't talking to them. And if they don't get anything back, then I'd like to hear it, so. You heard that one tonight, Phil?
April 21st.
Okay.
There's nothing mentioned about water and sewer and that sort of.
Okay.
Zero.
Okay.
And then the follow-up wrote, said, because there were two communications from our office to Jim. And what we're looking for, along with Bill, back and forth. And these communications made it back, revisions were made, notes were put on the plan. And I reached out to.
The revisions were given to Peter.
Right. I reached out to Peter and I asked him, was he, did you review water and sewer? Did you review everything? Are you hired? you review everything, are you hired to review Water and Sewer? Because I'm not an engineer, he said yes. In the past, I've usually had relationships with the peer review engineer, would contact me, would talk about all those things, and he would put that together and submit it to you guys.
Okay, the last, actually, not the last, all of the peer review letters typically go on the verbiage on the front page with all the hearing dates, and it says, per peer engineer, engineer review letter of this date, this date, this date, this date, this date. Okay, and then there's the last one, for the, hopefully, the, all the final changes that'll go through, and then there's a punch list of whether it's housekeeping items or something major, okay? And that specific peer review is also referenced in here in the memorandum of decision, so, so everyone can find that letter and see the last 10 or 15 things that need to be done reference the memorandum of decision. So we, we have a couple pieces missing, which is why this hearing's getting reopened. And, and just, and sometimes the, the boards change hands, and, and the old guard didn't, didn't know, or sometimes, you know, the engineer's not as astute, so they don't get the, I mean, he sent out the forms, but some don't, okay, to know that what you're supposed to do. And years ago, when the subdivision rules came out, that we took years to rewrite, we always had to have these training missions and go to all the boards and say, by the way, did you know that you have input on every subdivision, and this is what you're supposed to be looking at for anything else? The selectmen are supposed to be looking at schools, populations, fire department looks at fire stations, the police department looks at more patrols, et cetera, et cetera, all kinds of stuff that they're supposed to have in, and, and the letter comes back saying, yeah, we're good with this, but we need extra hydrants, we need larger pipes, a longer run, not a dead end, a loop system, whatever it may be, whatever your requirements are, whatever you need gets into this decision, because you're gonna be picking this thing up later. That's the other part of it. The, the town accepts this thing like we just did tonight on the road, and we're stuck with it.
While, while we're talking on this, one of the things in my conversation with Tom, and I think it's a good idea, I think it passes on to you at one point while he was, the Water Sewer would like to have their own engineer do the peer review on all these subdivisions from now on. And it, it was done at one point in time, because.
You guys did that for years, Bruce Adams.
Yeah, Bruce Adams did it.
He was no longer on the board.
No.
Right, so he did them all, and.
So, you know, it's, what we, what I'll do is, I'll put that down as a, as an item in the December meeting, that basically, we would transfer that to them.
He was just delegated there. It's real, real simple.
Okay, but.
That's what you guys wanna do, right?
I don't have it on tonight's agenda, okay, but I want to.
All I want is an open relationship with whatever peer review consultant that you hire, to be able to go over all the stipulations that we talk about, and wrap that up in a nice neat package, so you guys can have that recorded, and everybody's happy.
That's what, what I call your decision, is, is what you're talking about, so.
Right, exactly.
So it goes through, and, and I'm okay with that. If you guys wanna have your own peer review engineer.
We have a consultant working on a construction viable, if you will, for Water and Sewer.
Yeah, okay.
So that nobody has to reinvent the wheel every time something comes up.
That's what we had, it took a while.
So, I mean, that's, that's really, really what needs to happen, so that all the standards are there.
Right.
Because there are too many other variables.
I mean, one of the other problems that we have, I can tell you right now, since Bob O'Hanley left the board, okay, and, and he's not doing as well as he used to, I can tell you that right now. It's, he used to do all the roads. He had been not the, not the road commissioner, but he had been the manager of the road department for years, here and also up in Plasto. His knowledge of how to build a road was excellent, and we lost something there, I can tell you right now. And we just haven't gotten anybody back.
You just gained one, right?
You got, you can, well, here's the problem.
Yeah, I know.
You're, you're on the board, you make the decision, you can't do it.
Exactly, I know.
Bobby can't do it, believe it or not.
No, Bobby can't do it, but, I mean, I've built plenty of roads. I worked for two or three companies that did roads, Water Sewer.
Does the planning board have to hire their own consultant to go on-site and make sure?
Yeah, well, that's what Peter's supposed to be doing. When the roads were built, and how this came about, Jim and I just talked about this, was that we, we had the consulting engineers going out, and, and the consulting engineers were going out at milestones, that's why in the regulation it says, within 10 days, you do notice in writing of milestones of what you're doing. Sunset escaped all that, there was nothing in writing that came out, so the engineer didn't get 10 days notice to get out there with his tape measure, and everybody checked in to make sure that they did the right amount of pavement going down, and that it was, you know, three inches rolled and two inches rolled. So, and we had all kinds of issues out there, because we were never duly notified within time to get the engineer out.
Yeah.
Well, then, that went on for years where we were actually on it, but there was an expense issue, so the RPC position was created on the board, because O'Hanley had the knowledge and experience. That was a much lower rate for the engineers, they were in town, we still got the 10-day notice, O'Hanley was out there, since he did that job for 20 years for the board, and he was out there, and he saved more subdivisions with his, his steel tape measure, making sure that was rolled exactly right.
Instead of that much, we ran that much.
And he caught a lot of guys skimming, you know, Valley Farm Road was one of them, the contractor that went in there did that, the paving, okay, was trying to shortchange the town several inches of the two minutes, which would've left with a road that would've broken up over time, so he caught it.
One of the worst things, and we, we got this on Sunset, they never called us, told us they were putting second coat down, the final coat? No tack. If you don't put tack between those roads, they don't adhere.
Only that, they, they missed an entire manhole.
Well, I mean, that's not what you are, a terminal project, if we're, we're getting on a project, we're including engineering services and inspections.
Good, and that's.
So include that with the, with the project.
That's what.
We do go up there ourselves, obviously, to inspect, but you should have a professional on there checking.
We did, we, we had it in there, and then we.
Sunset's biggest one is the hydrant right now.
Oh, yeah, the hydrant.
The hydrant, yeah.
Another problem.
Hydrant is in front of the guys.
Since we get you in here.
Drive by.
That's gonna come out of there.
Well, here's, here's the problem, and I, I've gotta go over this first, so. Nahuolo bought the lots.
Yeah. Is that still in the right-of-way, or is it in the guy's?
It's on his lot.
It's on his lot, but he, he agreed to it.
So that may be have, we, we may not be able to take the funds out of Wallace.
No.
That's the problem there.
When did that?
Also, in between the lots, okay, two and three was where the storm drain came out.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
No riprap?
Wait.
We may not be able to get that out of Wallace.
Can we finish this discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're going off, well, since we have Water Sewer over here, but the water, but the hydrants aren't supposed to be on private property on new subdivisions, they're supposed to be on, and within the right-of-way.
I'm very well aware of that, but when the developer goes out there and stakes it,
and says, this is my circle, here's my planting strip, and here's where it's going, that's all that I can go by.
Right, but it still has to follow the regs, so if that's not the right-of-way, then guess what? It goes into the right-of-way.
Well, you're gonna have a pretty good disturbance out there.
Well, not necessarily, if you cap it and just pull it back, because the pipe shoots across and stick it on the tight side on that, I think it'll still be within the right-of-way.
We already discussed it, he needs that for a blow-off, because it's the end of the line.
I have to have a hydrant.
Right, you, you need a hydrant.
No, we do need a hydrant, just relocate it over to the other side.
Well, what has to happen is, you gotta dig it up.
No, 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 no.
No, I know.
The homeowner's gonna go ahead, you know, there's gonna be a disturbance out there.
Anyway, let's, 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 let's forget about this right now, let's still discuss Billis Way.
It's gotten complicated, because the homeowner doesn't wanna do anything.
Exactly, so.
So, okay.
Could I just ask one question?
Sure.
On eight, lots A and B, you're gonna, the selectmen have to be involved, don't forget our access road, that, that should be included with A and B, to make sure the town has control of that access road.
Well, that's in B, isn't it?
It's on A.
It's on A.
It's on A.
I don't know.
Oh, yes, yeah, yours, yeah. But the access road for the well.
To the well, yes, the, the, I remember that, we already discussed that.
Yeah, well, I, you know.
See, and I think that's where maybe, I don't, Phil just brought that up, maybe because we didn't get, we've gotten nothing about peer review, we've gotten anything like that, because we were a butter, but.
No, the developer, the developer was here, we discussed it with, it's gonna be a gate, gated thing for the.
But, right.
For the Water Department and everything else, no problem.
We signed up on a little.
We just, we just got this today, I, I can't even enter it into the meeting, because it's within 48 hours. But the reality is, this is the peer review coming in on the MOD, and there's a lot of stuff that's gotta go in this thing yet. And we'll end up writing a damn thing, I can tell you that.
No, we always wrote them anyway.
Well, we didn't write them, we had somebody else that knew how to write them.
So.
But, you know, one of the problems I'm finding, he'll undercut other engineers we have. And, and when he does that, then he doesn't do things.
Okay.
Who's the loser? The Town of Groveland.
Okay.
Who's the winner? The developer. Can't be that way. We need things done, we need all the things done, everything has to happen, all right? I got one of the newer engineers we have here tonight, I keep telling him, you're gonna need to hire, get that fee up a little bit more, because you got more work. I think he's getting it now.
Okay?
If you undercut, believe me, yeah, you'll get the job, but, you know, it's not doing us any good. That's the problem. Unless you push the hell out of him, and he doesn't make a nickel on it.
Okay, so where are we going with this? We, we close, we move the hearing, get everything else.
I'll advertise the rehearing, I'll open the hearing.
Okay, got that.
I'll do it.
That completes the agenda, motion to adjourn?
No.
No, no, I, I got one other thing, and that's.
Oh, what do we got?
Future meetings, because.
Okay.
One of the problems, we're getting bogged down in a lot of this stuff.
You all set?
We take.
Yeah, you all set, yeah, you all set, yep.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Try to get your decision together for the next hearing, submitted any time.
What we used to do.
What is your next hearing?
Jim?
Oh, this one here, the December, what's it, 19?
19.
19, so you get them on.
It's, it's, the door's opening to the planting board, there's a box, you'll see stuff sticking out of it.
Five pages, five pages, whatever it was.